Redevelopment Agency Meeting of September 13th, 2017. The first order of business is to approve the minutes of August 29th, 2017. Councilmember Newton?
Mayor, move to approve the minutes of August 29th, 2017.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Newton and a second by Board Member McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Chair Ralph?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
The vote passes four in favor.
Business Item 2B, Approved Resolution Number 197, authorizing the Chair to execute a participation agreement with Smith &amp; Edwards Company regarding the 90th and Redwood Shopping Plaza Number One Community Reinvestment Project area. David Oka?
Yes, Jeremy Olson will address this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The item for your consideration tonight is a participation agreement with Smith &amp; Edwards that provides an incentive for their site within the community reinvestment area. There are few criteria that are contained within the agreement that they have to meet. Once they do, then we'll issue that incentive. That's basically it, and I'm available for any questions.
Thanks, Jeremy. Board Member Newton?
Mayor, move that we approve Resolution Number 197.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Newton, a second by Board Member McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Chair Ralph?
Yes.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes five in favor.
Business Item 2C, Approved Resolution Number 198, authorizing the Chair to execute Amendment Number Three to the Agreement for Development of Land for the Community Development Area Number One, Jordan Valley Station. David?
Yes, this was heard at the last council meeting. At the last council meeting, as you may recall, there were two issues that were put together. We see this Amendment Number Three as a housekeeping item to make the dates consistent with the development agreement, and it is perfunctory in nature, and ask for your approval on this. We have Adam and Paul Coats standing by for any questions.
Thank you. Board Member Burton?
Move to approve.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member Burton, second by Board Member Newton. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
No.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Chair Ralph?
Yes.
Vote passes four to one in favor.
Business Item 2D, Approved Resolution Number 199, authorizing the Chair to execute Amendment Number Four to the Agreement for Development of Land for the Community Development Area Number One, Jordan Valley Station. David?
Yes, I would like to turn the time over to Mr. Russ Wall to address this item.
Thanks, David, and thanks, Mr. Chair and Board Members. As you recall, the last meeting we had, this item was tabled. The next morning, we met with the developer and listened to the concerns that he had and expressed the concerns from the city's standpoint. And with my apologies to the developer, we thought we'd come away with a solution to the issue. So I think there may be two conflicting point of views to look at on this, but I want to present the one that the city would prefer, that the council would consider and approve. The main concern was the developer had some timing issues. He was very concerned about having to come back to the board if he had a willing buyer in place. For us to set up a meeting with the board, get the board together, he felt that that might inhibit his ability to sell parcels of 10 acres or less to potential buyers. So we came up with what we believe to be a win-win, a good compromise that gives him some flexibility, but also protects the city in giving us one last chance to look at it. The proposal that we have would allow the developer, there's a development agreement and the ADL, and on the ADL, it gives him the opportunity to not have to come back to the board if he passes certain criteria, one of the criteria being that it follows the development agreement.
Do you have the other item? Sorry, I need that. Do you have it? I want the conditions. Sorry, Mr. Chair. These are qualifications we put in there. Okay, these would be the qualifications that the developer could bring to the city, and staff would be able to, namely, the city manager would be able to sign off on these if these criteria were met. The developer shall have the right to sell, transfer, convey a portion of the site measuring less than 10 acres to a third party upon administrative determination by the agency director as described below, that the proposed conveyance complies with the following condition.
The proposed transferee shall have the qualifications and financial responsibility. There's a financial aspect to it. The conveyance shall be in accordance with the Jordan Valley TOD Preliminary Development
Plan, and the developers will consider the impact of the conveyance on the overall mix of the site, and then the sale or transfer of a portion of the site will not adversely affect or reduce the office or commercial portions of the development. Meeting these criteria here would allow the developer to sell those parcels without having to have an RDA meeting. Any questions? Questions? Board Member Burton?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Mr. Wall, for the work you've done on this. I know you've been very involved in this since our last agency meeting, and there's been a great deal of information passed back and forth. And in the last couple of days, there's been additional information passed back and forth, and you've tried to keep this council updated on that, and thank you for doing that. But I'm a little feared that we don't have a full understanding of all the information that's come to us, particularly that was emailed to us today and that was emailed to us yesterday. So even though we tabled this last time, in light of the changes that took place just this week, and unless everyone's comfortable with what changes they've seen, I would be willing to go ahead and table this into October so we can digest the additional information we received this week and proceed from there. That is a motion, yes.
I'll second that for discussion. We have a motion by Board Member Burton and a second by Board Member Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Board Member Newton?
Let me ask Board Member Burton, what do you expect to change or the time will give us to accomplish with that?
Well, the email that we were received today, and emails we received yesterday with the changes and the, with additional options we can choose from, I don't know. Perhaps you have. I've read it, but I don't know if each of you have had time to read those to decide which one you wanted to vote for and if you want to vote for it today. I was just thinking you may not, but if you have, that's great. If not, then I'm willing to postpone it.
I just would speak against the motion. I'd like to decide tonight for the applicant, so that would be my opinion.
Let's vote.
Chair McConaughey? Oh, sorry, you're not the chair. Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
It's been a rough day. Board Member Burton?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
No.
Chair Ralph?
No.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Vote fails three to two.
Board Member McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I probably should have shared my thoughts on this earlier, but the reason I was in favor of tabling is because where we're currently down two council members, and obviously it was a close vote, I think it might be better if we have an opportunity to have all, or at least more folks present for that vote. I can tell you with what's been proposed currently, I'm not in favor and will likely be voting against. And I want to give the applicant as much opportunity as possible to make a good case. Where we're getting information relatively last minute, I would be okay tabling, but if there's enough who are willing to move forward right now, I would be fine going on with that. But like I said, knowing that I'm leaning in opposition to it, if it looks like it's going to fall split and not have resolution, I think a better motive, or a better option might be to table it. So I would suggest we move forward with the motion to approve or deny, and then if that fails along the same lines as this one did, then maybe reconsider that first vote. Those are my thoughts.
Board Member Burton?
Thank you, Chair. So we have the one from staff, and we also have an alternate one sent to us from Boulder that we could, if one doesn't go, we could choose the other. So we could choose between the two if you wanted to go that far today.
Would you be willing to make a motion to a date certain in the future to be tabled?
I would like to make the date in next month, October, so we have time for each council member to review the options on the different choices. The problem with choosing a date is, I understand we may be missing a couple of council people at our first meeting in October, so I'm thinking maybe the second meeting in October, so we have everybody here.
No later than?
No later than October 31st.
I'll second that.
So we have a motion by Board Member Burton, a second by Board Member Newton. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Mr. Chair?
Before we vote?
Point of order, was the motion to table?
Yes.
In a motion to reconsider, the motion has to be made by somebody on the prevailing side. The motion failed, so it would have to be somebody who was on the prevailing side.
But this was a different motion.
Okay.
Because it went to a date certain, so I'm willing to allow it. Let's vote.
Chair Ralph?
Yes.
Board Member Newton?
Aye.
Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member McConaughey?
Aye.
Board Member Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes, five in favor.
I would entertain a motion to adjourn the redevelopment agency meeting.
So moved.
Second. We have a motion by Board Member McConaughey, a second by Board Member Newton. All in favor? I call to order the City Council Meeting of September 13th, 2017. The first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led tonight by Kaitlin Whitlock.
Would the audience please rise and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Kaitlin.
Did we have a presentation?
No, it happened beyond, but we need to do the motion for chat if warranted.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we suspend the particular rule that would allow Councilmember Nichols to participate in this meeting tonight electronically. I'll second that, match Rule C8.
We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion? Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. When this came up last two times, you may recall that I voted in opposition on having this happen. As I read the council rules, it seems very clear to me that the council rules don't have a provision for the circumstances that Councilman Nichols is in right now. After the last meeting, I talked with a couple of council members and asked them to take a look at our council rules to see what adjustments our council rules need so that we can make this option available if we chose to do so. Unfortunately, they haven't been able to come back with some options for us yet, so that change has not happened. I do have a copy of Utah State Code here with me that gives provisions for participating remotely, as Councilman Nichols is wanting to do, and I would like to see this adopted by the city and replaced with the council rules that's in it now and have the state code put in place so that we have the flexibility the state code permits. Our council rules are not in opposition to the state code, they're just tied in with the state code is. And because I believe these council members I've talked to are still working on this and may have that in a near meeting, if not, I will present it myself in an upcoming meeting, I am going to go ahead and approve this suspension of the rule with the caveat that we will be adopting the state rules soon so that this will apply to not just this one council member, but other council members in the future.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to add a little bit of background to this, Councilmember Nichols would have otherwise been here tonight. However, he adjusted his schedule so that he could be present at the prior meeting we had, which was a special meeting to canvass the election. You'll recall I had some family needs come up that prevented me from being at that meeting, so rather than both me and him being missing, he was able to adjust his schedule, so he was able to make the last meeting. Consequently, he's not able to be here tonight in person, so that's why I would speak in favor of the motion. Thank you.
Let's vote.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Mayor Ralph?
Yes.
Vote passes five in favor.
Move to Communications, City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Nothing to report this evening. Thank you.
Deputy City Manager?
Nothing to report, thank you.
Interim City Attorney?
Nothing to report.
Scott?
Mayor, thank you, nothing tonight.
Brian?
Just one thing, I'd just like to personally thank everyone that, all city staff, your folks' support with the demolition derby. It went well, we didn't have any issues, and that's the last event of the year, the big event anyway, so we're planning for next year. Thank you.
Bill?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Justin?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mayor.
Chief McElreeve?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one announcement from the Fire Department. Marty Whitman, one of our admin assistants, after 17 years, is retiring. Her last day will be this Friday. We'll be having an open house starting at 1:30 till 4 o'clock at Station 53 there in Jordan Lanning, if you'd like to stop by. Thank you.
Chief Diamond?
Just to remind the council that we have our banquet, is this Friday our awards banquet. And again, this is in conjunction with our 50th anniversary of being a police department, and so thank you for those of you who are able to attend, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a great opportunity at the demolition derby and want to thank Brian and the public safety staff for a great event. Secondly, I would like to pull my agenda item 8B for a future council meeting, date uncertain.
That's Business Item 8B.
8B as in boy. That's all I have for tonight. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Nichols?
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing of note tonight, just appreciate your willingness to allow me to participate tonight. It's really kind of been a unique circumstance, and I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilmember Newton?
Nothing tonight, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you know, we just had ribbon cutting last Friday for a new store that opened at Smith &amp; Edwards here in West Jordan. But more than that, this past month, in the month of July, and I have the number, but my computer has happened to restart, so let me just go off my memory, it was like eight or 10 ribbon cuttings that we had in the month of July, and we also had several in June. The Chamber of Commerce has been very good on providing these ribbon cuttings for us and inviting us to join and attend. So I just want to say an attaboy to the Chamber of Commerce for the work they've done, for the many businesses that they have helped, and the several ribbon cuttings that we've been able to experience this year. It's wonderful, and we've already had two this month, and this month has just gotten started, and one of them is Smith &amp; Edwards. So thank you, Chamber of Commerce.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Nothing this evening. Thank you, Mayor.
I just would like to thank the staff that worked on the demolition derby. I know it doesn't come about without hard work, and I did have several texts after the event stating that it was one of the best in recent years, so thank you for that. We'll move now to citizens' comments. I have a few signed up to speak this evening. You'll be allowed three minutes to speak on the topic of your choice. First is Kathleen Zemansky. I don't know if I pronounced that right. I apologize if I didn't.
This is in regards to the public hearing number 7A, so now is the appropriate time?
Actually, if you're here on, if you'd like to speak during the public hearing, it will be later on.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Mike Baker, would you like to speak at the public hearing as well? And Eric? Alexandra Eframo?
Mayor and Council, I don't have my little meditation thing, but I just want to talk about a thing that bugs me more than anything else is our candidates that are running for office of West Jordan. So many of them are putting up their campaign signs illegally on UDOT property, on personal property without asking, on the Rocky Mountain Fire, I mean Station, and also Utah, I mean I also know that campaign signs, and it breaks my heart that our mayor had, Mayor Ralph had 50 signs, campaign signs stolen. I think this is abominable. When we run for office, we're supposed to have high ethics and high morals. And Mr. Riding went ahead and had three signs on West Jordan's city property, which is a no, 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 no. I called Mr. Jim Riding, and I asked him, and I didn't swear at him or anything else, I just said, "Why do you put your campaign signs on West Jordan's city property?" And Mr. Riding had the audacity to hang up on me. Now, here's a man that's running for office, and please tell me, when you're either a councilman or a mayor or whatever, if you have a disgruntled person, you don't hang up on them. That's bad ethics, and I charged Mr. Riding with bad ethics, with bad integrity. I didn't swear at him. I wish I would have, because then it would have been a reason for him to hang up on me, but I didn't. All I said to Mr. Riding is, "Why did you put your campaign signs on West Jordan's city property?" And without saying a word, he hung up on me. So, Mr. Riding, you do not have ethics, you lack integrity. That is not right. The other thing is, the next time, and I applaud Mr. Burton, I mean Councilman Burton for trying to do a council meeting, I mean a town hall meeting, please, in the future, no more town hall meetings unless you advertise two months in advance. Use the marquee and use West Jordan Journal. Do you know how many people were there at Mr. Burton's town hall meeting? Two, myself and Mr. Thomas, two people out of 110,000 people for a town hall meeting. And I thought, Councilman Burton, you don't do it the day after Labor Day. We have to program it more. Thank you for listening.
Mayor, I just want to comment that if citizens are unhappy about where signs are, please contact our clerk's office. If it's state property, you contact Lieutenant Cox. If it's county property, you can contact Sherri Swenson. Thank you.
That's all that have signed up to speak. Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments, now would be the opportunity. For the record, state your name and address, please.
Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South here in West Jordan. Just a couple of comments. I know tonight on your six high, you know, I read this, and the first thing that comes to my mind, I guess in our politically correct world, is I finally realized that my worth as a citizen is somehow less. I fell to see, when I look at the law, and there's a law against assaulting me, I should be treated the same regardless of why that individual assaulted me. Whether, obviously, he hated me when he assaulted me, and so to put this, an extra protection for a handful of items, to me, is wrong, and it's going in the direction that, for some reason, we try to, you know, we seem to be somewhere else, and now we're trying to bring it back. So for me, I look at your item tonight, and I look at it from the point that I just realized that I'm worth less than somebody else. realized that I'm worth less than somebody else. Also, I want to commend the council for allowing Councilman Nichols to participate tonight. He is a representative of me. And, and there is guidelines within the state that defines what a resident means. And we also have guidelines that says what is required to represent us here in West Jordan. And if those things are being fulfilled and accomplished, we got done just paying for a system that allows us to do that. And in this day and age, there should be no reason why he can't be here and participate. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' comments? I will close the citizens' comment portion of the agenda and we will move to the consent calendar. I will be pulling Item E and I for discussion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Move to approve all consent items with the exception of E as an echo and I as an igloo.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob? Oh, he's not here yet, sorry. Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Vote pass the six in favor.
Okay, I pulled Item E on the consent calendar. Approved Resolution 17-178 authorizing the mayor to execute Change Order Number Six to Knife River Corporation for work required for the 70th South Utility Project Phase 2B in an amount not to exceed $114,206.60. And I pulled this item. We've met in the last two weeks many times concerning this project. We have been inundated with citizen complaints about this project. We've been on the news yesterday. And it seems that, it appears by their schedule that they're way behind schedule, like a long ways, months behind schedule. And adding more work to their already workload would seem to be inappropriate to me at this point in time. I'm concerned that they will not complete on time. We'll have to wait and see if they're done. But it appears like they're not going to make it. So, adding more workload at this point in time would not be appropriate, in my opinion. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Just to clarify, is this for additional work or is this for the work that was, for work that had been previously completed, that had been given sort of a tentative administrative approval?
I hope that it's not work that's been completed because they're over 10% of the contract and under our ordinances, it would not be able to proceed on this item, on any item unless the approval of the council. Justin?
Yeah. You're correct, Mayor. It would be inappropriate to authorize a change order without the financial authorization. The work that's being presented before you today within the staff report are a number of items in there that better the city with regards to the soft spot, pothole repairs, locating utility or water service laterals, and making some storm drain connections from the church. Those are all things that greatly benefit the city. And, I mean, they would eventually have to be done anyways. And so, it's best to be done while the road is up and while the construction's underway than have to go back in a future date, remove asphalt, make those, make those fixes. Which is why these items are being presented to the council.
I just have one question for you. Is it your belief that they can get this work, this extra work done and all of the work under contract by the time that they put in their critical path method?
No, Mayor. I don't think they can get it done within the timeframe they've scheduled.
Does that concern you?
No, I, it doesn't concern me as much as being able to have to go back in at a future date to make these fixes. That would be less effective and less efficient for public funds.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and maybe you can help me understand. So, do we know how many days they're behind schedule or?
It's more like months. It's a matter of months.
Okay, so number of months times thirty is six months?
Roughly sixty, sixty to ninety days behind schedule.
Okay, so by approving this Change Order Number Six, it says that the amount of the contract is increased by the sum of $114,000 and the contract time for the completion of the work shall be extended by seven calendar days. So if they're extending it by seven calendar days, are they able to do these eleven items in those seven days? Is that, is that kind of what they're saying?
That's correct. The request for the contract time extension of the seven days you see in the change order is to perform this work.
Okay, and it's seven days of the contract, but they're already ninety days behind.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, since they are already behind, is it appropriate that we could extend this contract to a different contractor and could they play in the sandbox together? And that way, we wouldn't slow Knife River down any and another contractor could be doing the work simultaneously?
Hypothetically, it can happen, though I've had bad experiences of mixing contractors on the same work zone. They tend to step over each other's feet and it becomes difficult to manage the work zone when they have different equipment, different personnel in the same area.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Typically, I try and get my questions for specific, for specific issues answered prior to council meeting. However, there are two new questions that I've come up with today that I want to discuss with our attorney that would not be appropriate for this setting. Therefore, I move to table this item to our, no later than the September twenty, no later than September 27th.
Second, Mayor.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Councilmember Newton. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Mayor Rolfe?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Newton?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Vote passes six in favor.
There may be some ambiguity in the consent item calendar. And so, I would ask David Brickie, on my, it states that Item G had been removed on the...
That's correct. We had, under the impression that the council had previously given directions that G had been removed. In fact, that has been communicated with the contractor. They were notified in person yesterday by Mr. Davenport. Ms. Wells was present. They were also notified that that thirty day was not going to occur. I will exercise authority granted to the city manager to see that that road is not closed.
Okay, thank you. So, for the record, I didn't make that clear. I want to make it clear now that Item G was not a part of the motion. Thank you. Item I, approved Resolution 17-182 expressing support for legislation during the 2018 session providing law enforcement stronger tools to address crime that deliberately targets a victim because of race, religion, sexual orientation, national origin, or disability. Councilmember Burton, is your item?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to bring this up and discuss this for a moment. And I would like to answer the question that was brought up during citizens' comments. Does this mean that someone who does not fit under those descriptions is less than a person? And I would, I would say no. I would say it's just the opposite of that. This is making it so, if it's a crime of convenience, then the law applies to it right now. But if it's a targeted crime, then it would be the same as if it's a crime of convenience. And a good example that was shared with me recently was if someone is going down the street and, and they, for some reason, they think they need some money and they break into someone's car, not knowing whose car it is or why they're breaking into that, and they sell somebody out that car and they get arrested, they go to the court and the judge would give them a sentence. If they chose that car particularly because they knew who the owner of that car was and deliberately targeted that car, that would give the judge an additional tool, not only to exercise the crime they did on breaking in, but their purpose that they were targeted to break into that. So it just adds a little extra opportunity to someone who went and did a little more work or did a little more crime to commit that crime a little more. So that's why this is there. And that's why I think this is good. And this is simply a resolution. It doesn't change any of our laws at this point. But I want to send a message and I want West Jordan to be the leader to send the message that we don't tolerate people mistreating other people because of any particular reason, whether it's because they live next door to me and they don't like me, or whatever the purpose happens to be. This list is not all inclusive, but it does it because they choose to do them because of a targeted purpose. So that is what the purpose this is here. I would be happy to hear the council's thoughts on this.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. In quick consultation with Councilmember Burton, my understanding is that this has been done in conjunction with Senator Fillmore. And I would consequently, Thatcher, I'm sorry. My apologies on that. I would move to suspend the rule to allow him to address the, well, actually, do we need to suspend the rules to allow him to address the council if he co-authored this with Councilmember Burton? I'd rather not suspend a rule if we don't need to.
Anyone opposed to allowing Senator Thatcher to speak?
Personal privilege.
Up to three minutes. Senator Thatcher?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to be here today. In Claremont, New Hampshire, over the weekend, an eight-year-old boy was assaulted by a group of older teenagers. He had a noose tied around his neck and he was pushed off a picnic table. The young man was, young man, the boy was taken to a hospital and treated and is home with his family. But the police in New Hampshire are looking at this very seriously. I wish that I knew more about the city of Charlottesville than the fact that it was the site of a horrible, horrible white supremacist rally that ended with the murder of a woman whose crime was to stand up to evil and bigotry. In Utah, police are prohibited from looking at these types of victim targeting crimes. Our prosecutors are not allowed to argue these types of victim targeting crimes, nor are judges allowed to consider at sentencing. These particular types of crimes, you know, someone, someone asked me, and I think this is what Councilman Burton referred to, aren't all crimes hate crimes? And the answer is no. If you ask any cop, they will tell you almost no crimes are hate crimes. Most crimes are crimes of opportunity. When people break into a car, it's because they want drugs. It's because they want money. Very rarely is thought given to who the victim of that crime is. These types of victim targeting crimes are especially heinous because to be able to prove intentional targeting, the person has to announce why they did it. They have to announce that they targeted someone and why. People that do that typically are called terrorists. And they announce who they targeted and why specifically for the purpose of causing fear through those communities. Now, the resolution that is before you, first, I would hope that you would move the amendment. Initially, we were trying to keep the language as simple as possible because it is only a resolution and not actual statutory change. But some of the groups that have been involved in supporting this were concerned that race doesn't cover ethnicity and ancestry. And so, we want to include all of the things that are included in current Utah state statute. But understand that this resolution here today does not solve the problem. It's not a change to the state's laws. And the gentleman who spoke was correct. Any solution that comes forward must offer equal protection under the law. It cannot protect one race and not another. It must protect all races. It must protect all religions. This solution also needs to protect First Amendment rights. It also needs to protect religious liberty. The solution is complicated and really not what is before us here today. I am proud of West Jordan for being willing to be the first city to step up and say that these types of crimes are not tolerated in our city. And that we believe that even though this is a state problem, showing the support of the city of West Jordan will help start the conversation and will prove that the state of Utah will stand up to these types of victim targeting crimes. If you have questions about specific language, I would be happy to discuss those offline. But I think that that's not really why we're here today. We are here today to express gratitude for West Jordan for stepping up and leading out on this issue. Thank you.
Councilmember Newton?
There we go. Thank you, Senator Thatcher. I have a little bit of a struggle with the whole idea of hate crimes. And it bothers me that we even have to even think about that kind of situation. The, the hard thing for me is, as Senator mentioned, that unless they announce their intent, we don't know what they are thinking. So, does that mean we guess that they are hating? That's what it sounds like to me. And, and therefore, you know, we should take all these crimes seriously regardless of who is being attacked. And we shouldn't tolerate any of these things and should prosecute them to the fullest extent as much as possible in any way that we can. But I don't believe that, that attributing something as a hate crime is the right way to go. I, I, I know that exists and I know that it happens. But I, but I think we should, we should use every means that we can to address the, the issues of the crimes and not try and determine what somebody is thinking.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a difficult issue that, for the most part, falls outside of the walls of our city hall. This is an issue that the city council is not intended to address. And it's really something that needs to be addressed by the state. something that needs to be addressed by the state. That said, I very much applaud what Senator Thatcher has proposed, and I am supportive of the efforts to encourage the conversation to see what we can do. I've had some prolonged conversations with Senator Thatcher, and we spoke about not necessarily categorizing these types of crimes as hate crimes, but rather as targeting crimes. And one of the issues that I see is that if somebody targets someone because they are part of a particular group, then there are more victims than that one individual. Other members of that group become fearful because indeed it does become a form of terrorism. And allowing, not allowing, rather encouraging conversation at the state to find out how we can address those additional victims and find recompense for them. They may not have been the ones personally assaulted, but they do have an additional level of fear for the safety of themselves and their family because they're part of that group. I would be in favor of encouraging the state to address this issue to see what might be done. Again, this is something that falls primarily outside of the realm of responsibility of the City Council, and in the past, I've not been supportive of these types of initiatives because I've felt that it really is the duty of the state to take this up. But this is something that does hit close to home, and we've seen escalation of what's been happening throughout the country, and I think it would be appropriate to offer support and encouragement to our legislature to see if they can add additional tools to deter these types of crimes and find recompense for the additional victims that would otherwise go without justice. Thank you, Mayor.
So, Mayor, I would like to make a motion. If the council approves... Let me pull that resolution up. Substitute... Thank you. Substitute Resolution seventeen dash one eighty-two.
Second. I have a motion by Councilmember Burton, a second by Councilmember McConaughey. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Newton?
No.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Hi.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Ruff? Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
The vote passes five to two in favor.
Item seven A, public hearing item, receive public input and consider for approval, ordinance seventeen dash five-one regarding a rezone of 1.04 acres from RR1B Rural Residential One-Acre Lot Zone to R114F Single Family Residential 14,000-square-foot Lot Zone for property located at 7347 South, 3200 West. Jason and Amy Zander applicant. Scott?
Thanks, Mayor. I'll turn the time over to Larry Gardner for summary of the report. Melanie, could you switch the screen?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yeah, this isn't working. Is that plugged in there? I'm really not this in and out, apparently. So the Zanders own a piece of property at 7347 South, 3200 West. It's on this corner. It's a one-acre lot that was planted years ago in the Trestre Acre subdivision, which encompasses a larger area down through here. They have applied to amend the zoning from RR1B to R114F in preparation for a subdivision. They want to potentially sell off their back portion and subdivide this for a single-family home. As you can see on this map, it's low-density residential, the general plans supports both rural residential and R114 is the smallest lot that is supported in the low-density residential. The primary reason for zoning to R114 rather than half-acre lot is so that they can keep use of their backyard after a home is built. The lot will probably end up larger than 14,000 square feet, probably more like 16, closer to 17,000 square feet when it is, if it is subdivided. And this is just more of an aerial view, excuse me, of the area. You can see there's a mixture of different types of zoning. There's half-acre lot across the street, R110, to this way's R18. You know, next door's the one-acre lots, which are at the Trestre Acre subdivision. The primary access, if it is subdivided, would be off this street here, and it's really on the edge of the Trestre Acre subdivision, right on the corner of this street and 3200 West. There has been some rumors going around, and I feel that phone calls, that if this is rezoned, it will take away animal rights for the whole neighborhood. That is not true. The only people that will lose animal rights are Zanders, who are the applicants. They have no interest in keeping animals anyway. The other rumor is that if this zoning is put into effect, then it will require the rest of the entire subdivision to put curb gutter and sidewalk in, which I have seen nothing on our capital improvement plans would require that. I just wanted to bring those up because those are the major arguments that I've heard both from the planning commission and personal phone calls. The planning commission did, in a unanimous vote, recommend approval of this zone change, and staff likewise supports that and recommends that the City Council approve this zone change. Do you have any questions for me?
Questions for Larry? Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, you mentioned across the street the half-acre lots, which are right there to the north, it looks like. I see two four lots there that are half acres, but it looks like the one right next to it is 7280, is that a one-acre lot? And is also the next one...
This lot actually used to go all the way to this street. It used to be one big lot, and then it was subdivided years ago. So I don't know the exact size, I don't think that's an acre. I think it's probably maybe a little over a half acre.
Okay, so the two are right on the street, I mean, the four are right on the street are somewhere around half acres, but then beyond that, there are larger lots again?
There's some larger lots.
I mean, going to the north?
Yes, there's some one-acre lots, all of these down in this...
Are all one-acre lots as well?
No.
Oh, they're half acres.
Most of them are half-acre lots.
But there are some mixed in?
The one-acre lots are primarily along the canal here, and then, of course, these few are one-acre lots. So there is a mixture of different lot sizes in this area.
So to the south, they're acre lots, to the east, they're acre lots, to the north, they're half-acre lots?
Yes.
And to the west is church, that's a bigger lot.
Church, yes, big lot. And then these are all, this is all zone medium-density residential. Now, if you get to this end of the subdivision, there's smaller lots, there are an R110.
I see.
Good.
Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So I can't really tell on this picture, but it looks like on 7325 South, there isn't a sidewalk curb and gutter.
No, there's not.
So that would be required to be put in, or...
No, just if this house, if this house, if the zoning was passed and the subdivision approved, this house would either be required to put improvements in, just this house only, or defer the improvements, which would be, which would mean depositing the cash. So if in the future the city decides to do the rest of it, then we have the cash to already pay for that development of that lot.
And it wouldn't do anything for the property at 3129 that's just east of that parcel, so?
No, this is very specific just to this parcel property.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for indulging me. I apologize for being a little late this evening. Quick question, Larry, on that, I had the almost exact same question that Councilmember Anderson just had, as far as the sidewalk and curb and gutter would go. So the new house would either have to put it in or pay the deferral?
Yes.
But the old house wouldn't have to, because they'd both be part of the subdivision, that's why I ask.
They would probably, they may have to defer it also because it'd be part of the subdivision. Now, the city put this curb gutter and sidewalk in to this point when 3200 West was...
Right, but it just barely goes around the corner and stops, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Larry. I will now open the public hearing for item seven A. Now we will hear from the three that have signed up to speak on this item. Kathleen.
Okay, so I live in a house directly across from where this lot would be if it is rezoned. We built that house 12 years ago, Troester Estates, and that neighborhood, to me and my family, we have affectionately nicknamed it the T, because the neighborhood comes down and then splits off into a T neighborhood. And so we take walks and bike ride around there, and we've met and come to know most of the people who live within this T neighborhood. So when I consider my neighborhood, I don't consider it to the arbitrarily drawn lines of Troester Estates, which does not include every house within this T neighborhood. And when I go down south into the T, there is multiple neighbors and friends who have homes that do not fit within the recommended guidelines for the acreage and the plot size. And we love them just the same, and I love those neighbors, and I consider them great assets to my neighborhood. I love my T, my kids love my T, and we would never want to do anything that would devalue the neighborhood, anything that would do any harm to that neighborhood. And so when I think about whether I support this lot being made or not, I take into account, would this lot add value to my neighborhood, or would it take away value from my neighborhood? And in my personal opinion, this lot would add value to my neighborhood, and so I do support the subdivision and the creation of this new lot.
Thank you. Mike Baker?
Sorry, I'm going back in the order I called earlier, I apologize. He's always wanted to be me. My name is Mike Baker, I live at 7611 South, Autumn Drive, which is a neighboring subdivision. I've lived there about 20 years. My uncle, who's also Mike Baker, lives right in this neighborhood, has for about 30 years. So I've spent a lot of time, that's who I worked for, for many years, so daily I've traveled on this road. And in fact, we'd even first considered about purchasing a home or a property in this neighborhood, but frankly, some of the sizes of the neighborhoods that were available, or the lots were available, were going to be too much for maintaining that property. So as I look at it, I do think that it does add value to the neighborhood. I think a nice home, well-done, would provide value, bring additional good people, which has always been important in a neighborhood. And I know that the Zanders do spend quite a bit of time maintaining their current property and also the property of their parents, who are aging. And so I am supportive of this, I feel like it does add value, I think it doesn't take away from any of the value or the things that are important to the rest of us who live in this neighborhood and in neighborhoods that are nearby. We are all quite connected in this area, and value the friendships that we all have. I just feel that this would, support this division would bring a lot of value to the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric?
Thank you. I have heard some of the fears of some of my neighbors about additional development taking place in the neighborhood if this were to be allowed. As I look at the overhead map, there's really only potentially two or three more places that another home could be put in if someone else were to decide to subdivide. What, I come to a different conclusion from them, and I support this more because when I look at that overhead and I look at the possibility for a developer to come in and buy up maybe two or three homes that have large unused pieces of their property, I fear more that that would happen than that we would have one more house on a full third acre. I think that it actually protects our neighborhood and keeps it as a small residential development. So I like, I would prefer to see it happen that way. Another thing that I wanted to bring up is that the reason why I moved into the neighborhood was specifically for one reason, and it was because there wasn't an HOA there. And I support private property rights when they're within reason, and I think this is reasonable, what's being asked for. I would hate to see our City Council become a quasi-homeowners association in that vein. So I would urge you to support this subdivision. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishing to speak? Please come forward. Please, for the record, state your name and address.
Alan Pirro, 7378 South, 3100 West. My property is immediately east and south of the proposed change. To save some time, and rather to get into the pros and cons of this subdivision, in doing some research, we have a problem, and it's rather large, and I would ask the council to table this motion after I present why. In 2002, in March, an initial subdivision request was made to West Jordan City to subdivide Trestre Acres into half-acre rural residential lots. It was a very lengthy process, yet like this one was divisive, and it ultimately, in August, actually on August 27th of 2002, was passed with some coddles from the start and at the time of passing. The engineering staff of West Jordan came out and looked at this proposed rezoning, and they came up with some definite necessities and recommendations, not the least of which is that in order to support, because there is, and it's not pictured here in this particular picture, but there are some very small lots on either end of our T. They are currently being fed by a six-inch culinary water line that provides culinary water and our fire protection. The city engineer at that time put in, as a part of the approval for this, the upgrade to an eight-inch culinary line to provide proper water and proper fire protection. And I spoke with Mr. Kidd, who is West Jordan's utilities supervisor, and two of his people, and also with West Jordan's city water billing. That line was never put in. It was never paid for, it was never, the proposal was to put a back charge on the back of the water bill to take and pay for the improvements, so that the applicant did not have to put in that line out of his pocket immediately to proceed with his building, but it was never put in. Mr. Kidd is very familiar with our six-inch line, and he's very familiar with the strain that is put on it. There's another problem. At that time, the City Council, when they passed this, put in the provision that no building was to be done until that line was put in. Two homes were put in before the line was ever even, it fell through the cracks. In February of 2004, and also in March of 2004, two addition... In February of 2004, and also in March of 2004, two additional applications were made to subdivide additional lots. They were granted, the homes were built, there was no line put in, there was no payment for the line to be put in. And a few years ago, we had a flood involving fire. West Jordan hooked up to a hydrant, their home truck sucked it right. I would ask for a table with this application until this could be resolved. Thank you.
City manager.
If the applicant, if the individual, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name, if you have a written statement that you wanted to supply to the record, because it looks thick, we can accept it, and then, but you can't make any more further statements.
Okay. These are all acquired minutes of all of the meetings and the approvals, highlighted. They were obtained by one of my neighbors for the city. They are welcome to them.
Anyone else wishing to speak during the public hearing portion of this item? Please.
My name is Terrell Erickson, 3128 West, 7325 South. My house is directly next door to Zananski's, kind of would be diagonal, it's got the big garage in it. And I think the point we're missing here is the re, I'm the newest member of, I bought the house that was built in 97, and I've talked to several neighbors about this, and I'm from Bluffdale originally, where one-acre lots were the status quo for years. And now they are subdividing. I think that's what we need to take into consideration, is the word subdivision. And we don't want, and most of the neighbors that I have talked with don't want to subdivide Trositer Acres. The reason I moved in is because it was a half-acre with animal rights, we have irrigation rights, we have ditches running through our properties that we all kind of share for irrigation water, and I just am opposed to subdividing half-acre or acre lots, because there, there's not very many of them left. And that's about all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
Alexandra Eframo, 3735 Judge Circle. I'm the citizen prior to this one. He brought up a lot of things that disturbed me about the water line not being put in, and how can a house be created if the water line was supposed to be put in and wasn't put in? Something fell through the cracks, and I support him and the papers he gave to Melanie, and I think we should postpone this and, and do some research on that, because he has a lot of data, and that puzzles me. I don't know how you can have a rule saying that the, that the water line has to be put in prior to a house being built, and then two houses are being built, from what I understand. I don't know, maybe I'm not following all the details, but I think that there's a lot to be researched in this. This doesn't make sense to me, and I agree, I'm, I'm against, I'm for open space, but, but the water line, and what he was saying about the fire, the fire hydrant sinking or whatever, I'm not really sure. I got lost on the explanation, but I think this should be tabled to do more research on it, because that, from 2002, that, that's, some cracks have fallen through, and I think we have to follow up on it, and I don't think we should act on ordinance 1751 today. I think it needs to be tabled. Please, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please.
My name's Amy Zander. I'm the one applying for this rezone. And we're good friends with the people who originally rezoned the north side of the neighborhood, and we actually just heard from him. He said he had to pay for a new water line to be put in from 3200 West to 3100 West, but it has been done. So I just wanted to be clear on that, that he paid for it. He was the original guy that rezoned it. And I'd also like to say that I know that a lot of the neighbors who are against this have fears of what this could bring in the future, or precedent for third acres, third acre lots, but it would really only add to other homes if it, if anyone did it, because there's a 95-foot frontage, and the acre lots could not support three houses with that large of a frontage. Our lot will look very similar to the homes that are to the north. The only difference is it won't be as deep of a backyard, but it will look very similar, it will look beautiful. I think it'll add a lot to the neighborhood. Thank you.
I just have a question. So you actually paid for the installation of the eight-inch line from 3200 to 3100 West?
No, I did not. Our friend, Rob Bailey, Robert Bailey, he was the one that originally applied to subdivide and rezon the north end of Trositer Acres. He paid for it.
Okay, thank you.
So it has been done.
I just wanted to be clear. Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name is Jason Zander. I'm the applicant with my wife Amy, and Rob Bailey's the one, he, I just verified that with him. I'm like, did that ever get paid for, did that line get put in? He's like, yes, I paid for it, from 3200, 3200 West to 3100 West. So I know we're short on time, so I'm just going to read a, a statement. "Our neighborhood consists of 40 homes located between 7200 and 7500 South along 3100 West, including the adjoining properties along 3200 West. Cul-de-sacs are at both the north and south ends of 3100 West. Over the past several months, Amy and I have been able to speak personally with each household in the neighborhood regarding our application. Support for our rezon has been positive. Of the 40 homes in the neighborhood, we've collected signatures of 25 households who fully support our intentions. Five households were indifferent, neither supporting nor opposing. Three of the four properties that are adjacent to our property are fully supportive. We've held multiple meetings in our home, providing opportunities to discuss concerns and ensure residents have accurate information regarding our intentions. In talking with residents who were not able to attend the meetings in our home, we found a lot of misinformation had been circulating. Here are the top five. You want to build two homes in your backyard? No, just one. You intend to put a road through your property, providing access to neighboring fields? No, just one home on the driveway. Your rezon will require each resident to pay for curb gutter and sidewalk in front of their property. No, city may require curb gutter and sidewalk only on the property involved in the rezon. We prefer to pay into a bond and not put curb gutter and sidewalk in front of the new subdivision, thus maintaining the rural look and feel that exists in most of the neighborhood. By surrendering your large animal rights, the city may cause all other residents to forfeit their rights. No, the surrendering of large animal rights again only applies to our application and our one-acre lot. And the concept of homes with, without animal rights is not new to this neighborhood. Nine homes on smaller lots with no large animal rights have been part of the neighborhood for nearly 35 years, never posing a threat to those with animal rights. If your property is rezoned, a developer could come demo homes and replace with three homes per acre. As my wife mentioned, because of the minimum width requirement of a lot, no one-acre lot could support more than two homes. I've been a resident of this neighborhood for 35 of the 45 years of my life. I care about this area and hope to contribute positively where I can. We feel the subdivision of our property will have a positive effect on the neighborhood and contribute to the beauty of the area. We ask that the city council consider and approve this request. Thank you."
Thank you. Yes?
Hi, I'm Maria Anderson. I live at 7325 South, 3100 West, and I am opposed to this. We all moved there, most of us, for a reason, to have larger lots. And I'm sure what the Zander's plan would be a nice home. However, as I said in the last meeting I came to, reducing it down from a half-acre to 14,000 square feet sets precedence for that to happen down the road. I personally feel if you want that kind of property, that size, you go on across the west side of 3200 and buy a house over there, because that's what it is. Those are small lots, and we all purposely moved to these areas for the reasons that we did, larger lots, water rights, animal rights. And, you know, it's saying now that that won't happen, that they won't be taken away, that you set a precedence. Jason himself showed me an outline, which would be, I'm going to walk up here. So right behind these trees right here, that's okay. Right behind all that, bang the trees right here, going down 32, down 7225, back over. Is a perfect plot of land for a developer down the road. And that could happen, our houses are older, maybe somebody will want to buy us out and put in smaller lots under whole new development. There could be a cul-de-sac, a street coming up off of 32, a street coming up off of 3100 West into a cul-de-sac, and now you've got all these homes. The only small properties that there are, less than half-acre in, in this neighborhood, is you go down the T, if you go south, that cul-de-sac somehow was developed, smaller, has curb and gutter. Everything else is a half-acre or one acre. So it's maybe seven homes that are less than a half-acre. So that's just my spin on it. I'm against it, and those are my reasons why. And I, I know I was told in the past, precedence doesn't take place in these kind of meetings and these kind of decisions, but I personally think they do. Thank you.
Thank you. I will close the public hearing for item 7A and return to the council for discussion or motion. Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask Larry a question, since he's here and Paul isn't, but in the planning commission packet, minutes, Larry had mentioned that a dry fire hydrant's a huge concern, and then Paul Brockbank had indicated he would go out this week and make sure the hydrants have water. Do you know if that?
He did, yes.
That he did, and they do?
They're operable, yes.
All right. And, and it sounds like the eight-inch water line satisfies?
Yes. And anyway, that issue will be thoroughly researched in the subdivision process.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Burton.
Larry, could you come back, please? Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up from Councilmember Anderson. They paid for the line, did they, did they get the line? Do you know if it's an eight-inch or a six-inch line that's there?
Eight-inch.
It is eight-inch? Okay.
Yeah, there's been four, four houses built on that, so.
Then the other question that I have, you mentioned that those are smaller lots, exactly to the north.
Half-acre lots, yes.
Oh, Justin, please.
According to our utility maps, and I'm not privy to all of the details of the subdivision that happened in the north, but according to our utility maps, that water line is a six-inch line. But in looking over the water model that was done, and the master plan that was done by Hanson and Lewis back in March of 2016, it said that the existing water system was adequate for this area based upon the current zoning. And so it doesn't appear that, that by upgrading that water line from a six to an eight causes any, any immediate needs to, to the subdivision. It helps provide flow, but because it's at the bottom end of a pressure zone, the fire hydrants there can receive, receive adequate fire water.
Okay. So if it's an eight-inch line, we're good. If it's a six-inch line, are we still good?
We're still, we're still good, eight or a six. If the, if there's further development that happens to the south to subdivide into 8,000 square foot homes or 6,000 square foot homes, that eight would be, would be required, but the subdivision we're talking about right here won't, won't provide any significant impact.
And Nate Nelson, the city engineer, did review that and make sure that it was adequate, and he referenced the same plan that Mr. Shulker referenced, so.
Thank you. So my, my last, maybe it's not my last question, but my next question is, you talked about the houses to the north, which are a little bit smaller lots, and I'm thinking the reason you reference that is to show that if we change the lot really immediately to the south, it kind of conforms, because it kind of mixes in with that.
Yeah. And this is right on the edge of the, the neighborhood going out of 3200 West, it's not in the heart of the, the one-acre horse properties at all.
Okay. So then what it does, it expands the smaller lots closer into the horse property. So then the next one would be, they come in 10 years later, say, well, we've got this other lot, this is a little bit smaller, which is right next to that, and then kind of the domino effect is what I hear. It won't happen, but I hear we're talking about that, so.
But again, that will be your decision.
We do consider that.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we go back to the slide that shows the zoning for the, for the area?
Right there.
So what, what is the zoning for those?
Okay, there, these are half-acre, this is our R5 around this side, and then the rest of these are R1, one-acre lots. So half-acre lot, one-acre lot, the half-acre lots kind of go up and around this way, then mostly along canal are one-acre lots, with the exception of these two. Then as you get down to this end, it's actually an R110 zone, and believe it or not, these bigger lots here are an R110 also.
So immediately surrounding this particular property, though, it's?
One-acre lots.
Rural, rural residential, correct?
One-acre lots, and then rural residential, half-acre lots.
So wouldn't this?
And across the street is a, this is all R110 over here.
So wouldn't that be considered spot zoning to take that one parcel and allow something so much smaller?
I have a, something you can read you from the Utah Bar Association on spot zoning, if you'd like.
Sure.
Okay. Says there is a theoretical limitation on the power of the governing body, body to adopt a zoning ordinance, in this case, the zoning map. The Enabling Act requires that territory on the map be divided into districts, and the Utah Supreme Court has recognized that such language seems by definition to prohibit a division of territories into very small pieces or islands, which are sometimes referred to as spot zones. Although seemingly clear in concept about spot zoning, the Utah courts have in practice deferred the decision to local governing bodies. The result is that the courts have thus been unwilling to acknowledge the existence of a prohibited spot zone, even when the zoning district is no bigger than a commercial corner lot. So what they're saying is that the courts do not feel like that they have the expertise or the desire to step into a local municipality's business by saying, no, you cannot zone the property, it's completely a legislative action, and probably 10 years ago, the Utah, the legislature agreed with that by even taking the definition of spot zone out of LUDMA. And so thus, it is completely up to the legislative body if they feel like it's appropriate and that it's compatible with the area. And so what I'm saying is if a spot zone is an argument for denial, that is probably not a very good argument.
My argument for spot zoning is based on, and I'm having a hard time finding our general plan with the new website redesign, but it seemed like our general plan specifically called out this type of definition of spot zoning and said that that's what we're trying to avoid.
Right.
So if the, if the courts have said cities are the legislative body that decides how they want to handle land use, and our definition of spot zoning is finding one parcel and soloing, singling that one out and making it something different from everything else, that, that would seem like spot zoning.
Well, then my argument would be, how is it different? Well, then my argument would be, how is it different than everything else? It's a single house and a single lot.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Larry, I have just one question for you. The, it's R114 with an F-size home, so a very large home.
Very large home.
And you stated earlier that it would be probably larger than 16,000 square feet.
Yes.
So, it's not a lot smaller than a half-acre lot.
No.
R120 is-
Yeah, and a half-acre lot under zoning ordinance, for whatever reason, is 20,000 square feet. It's not a half-acre, and so it's actually smaller.
It's a little smaller than a half-acre, but R1... Okay. Thank you very much.
Mayor, I would recommend, I would make a motion that we approve ordinance 17-51 as noted here.
We have a motion by Councilmember Newton and a second by Councilmember Jacob. Discussion to the motion. Councilmember McConaughey.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be speaking in opposition because to me, this seems like exactly what the general plan is trying to avoid, taking one particular parcel, making it different from the others. I appreciate Mr. Gardner's comment of, "What's the difference with a single family, a single home on a single lot?" But the difference is the size of the lot. As I'm looking at this and I'm thinking, if I were one of the properties in there and I came and bought a home based on the current zoning, thinking that this would give me separation from neighbors, this would give me a little extra space, and then all of the sudden, the city council's making a change that allows for a new home to be put in right near my property line, I would be a little bit frustrated. I've got a couple other arguments, but that's the largest one. It doesn't seem to fit where all the other lots are half-acre or larger to suddenly allow a third acre. I might be amenable to a half-acre here, but not allowing something to go as small. So, I will be voting in opposition to the motion. Thank you.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be in support of the motion, obviously I seconded it, mainly because it's not the city council telling the neighborhood what they can do. It's the neighbors, or it's the property owner, rather, coming and asking us to allow them to do something with their property. In my opinion, it's not a detrimental effect to the neighborhood, and it's not forcing anybody else to shrink their lot size, it's not getting rid of anybody else's property rights. Any real negative impact is very minimal, in my opinion, on this one. And so, property rights, in my opinion, in this case, will carry the day. And if you have a big backyard and you want to subdivide, let's hear your plan and we'll consider that one as well. But in this case, I'm inclined to go with the property owner on this one.
This one for me is really tough, being an owner of one-acre lot and being surrounded, or not surrounded, but very close adjacent property, a one-acre lot. I see the pros and cons. As I get older, it gets harder to take care of an acre, almost acre and a half, and I see the same with my neighbors as they age, that it's really hard to take care of it. Yet, I believe, I believe in property rights as well. So, for me, this is a hard decision to make.
Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm concerned about the effect of, "Well, my next door neighbor's like this, now I can do it." And then 10 years later, "Well, this one's like that, and I can do it." And pretty soon, it's all that way. I would like to, even though I don't have an acre lot, I would love to have one. However, I think those that choose to have an acre lot should have the right to choose to have the acre lot, and I think it'd be nice if West Jordan had acre lots for these people to choose. I don't think there's many in West Jordan for people to choose anymore. And those that want the smaller lots, we have lots of opportunities for them, so I will be speaking, voting in opposition to this.
Councilmember McConaughey?
No.
Councilmember Burton?
No.
Councilmember Newton?
Aye.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Nichols?
Yes.
The vote passes four to three.
Mayor, I request a break.
Does that a motion?
Yes.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Five minutes only. Oh, you got long net yet. the city of West Jordan's form of government to a council-mayor with seven council members. I will now open the public hearing for item 7B. Anyone wishing to speak on this item now would be the opportunity.
I'm hearing a couple different stories about the exact wording of the ballot that is going to be on the ballot, and I just want to know, can somebody please tell me where I can find the exact wording that you all have already agreed to as far as the exact wording? Some people are saying it's very complicated, it doesn't really say what you really want to say. So, can somebody tell me where I can find it?
Our city clerk will answer that question for you.
Yep. So, now, you're addressing the form of government, correct? Because there's two issues on the ballot.
I'm requesting, it says here, "Public input on the ballot proposition." I'm just looking for the exact wording that is going to appear in November on the ballot.
And you're referring to the form of government?
Yes.
It will say, "Shall the city of West Jordan, Utah, change its form of government to a council-mayor form of government with a seven-member council?" That's what will be on the ballot. I actually approved, I approved and approved the ballots today. There will be a voter information pamphlet going out in the middle of October that will have the language for both propositions. I'm in the process of gathering arguments for and against from sponsors that have submitted their names to me, and that will be mailed to every residential home for them to review both issues before they decide.
You're saying both propositions?
There's two of them.
What's the other one?
It's going to be the following public hearing. It's for the recreation center, the general obligation bond, so they're two separations.
So, there's only one proposition? There's only one pro-
Proposition.
Proposition.
Yes.
Or is it county, the form of government?
The government's considered a proposition, it's Proposition 10, and then the bond, general obligation bond, is strictly a general obligation bond.
So, it's a different subject?
Thank you very much. You're welcome.
I guess I got my hole deeper tonight. Steve Jones, 3234 West, 6920 South here in West Jordan. I'm still in opposition to this change in government. I think we had representation from the citizens on what should happen, and this is one of those points in time where I think the city council totally disregarded what the citizens The more I thought about it since the action has taken place, the more I'm convinced that our form of government that we currently have best represents me as an individual. I have adequate representation on the council, and I have adequate contact with you and even some that do not represent me. And while I understand from, you know, from the mayor, from some of the council members the reasons why it's desired to have a strong mayor form of government, I believe that we're putting too much of our eggs in an individual without any means of check and balances. In the meetings and stuff that I've participated in, you know, I actually came up with the same conclusion that the committee came up with, that if we're going to change our form of government, that the six-member committee was much better than just a strong mayor. It allowed the mayor to represent the city as a true mayor and to make decisions and whatnot, but it protected the city overall from mayors that in the future, and I'm not saying, I like our mayor that we currently have, and I don't have any problem saying that, but I'm thinking more of in the future. And if we get somebody that runs amok, basically, we have four years of that running amok that is very hard to control, and we see that in our federal government currently in over the last eight or so years. We've seen that exact thing because in order to override a mayor's veto, you have to have a supermajority. And so, and I think that's one of the caveats of the other, is the mayor does not have veto rights. If I've got seven members sitting up there, six members, whatever that is, that is a broader representation of what's happening in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 7B and move to item 7C. Receive public input and consider relating to the general obligation bonds and the potential economic impact the bond-financed facility will-
saying, I like our mayor that we currently have, and I don't have any problem saying that, but I'm thinking more of in the future. And if we get somebody that runs amok, basically, we have four years of that running amok that is very hard to control, and we see that in our federal government currently in over the last eight or so years. We've seen that exact thing because in order to override a mayor's veto, you have to have a supermajority. And so, and I think that's one of the caveats of the other, is the mayor does not have veto rights. If I've got seven members sitting up there, six members, whatever that is, that is a broader representation of what's happening in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 7B and move to item 7C. Receive public input and consider relating to the general obligation bonds and the potential economic impact the bond-financed facility will have on the private sector. I open the public hearing for item 7C. Anyone wishing to speak on this item now is the opportunity.
Jake Thomas, 1348 West Barton-Hubbell Drive. I had just one quick question, more so than a comment, on the ongoing costs for running the REC Center. Is that part of the general bond obligation, or is it also that would be added to the general fund of the city?
It's not part of the bond. The bond, the general obligation bond would just be to purchase or to build the facility.
So to employ those people and the maintenance and upkeep and stuff would be an ongoing expense, correct?
Well, it's designed to be covered by the membership.
In theory.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Please.
Alexandra E. Framer, 3735 Jud Circle. Can you please tell me, I'm not privy to the exact amount of money involved on the general obligation bonds? Now, is that one bond? Is that 10 bonds?
It's one bond, 46 million. Forty-six million is the maximum amount, one bond.
One bond, but it says here, "bonds," general obligation bonds. Should it be bond?
Please.
Man, I could be wrong. The reason why it says "bonds" is when the city goes out to bond and they bond and receive money, it's like a loan, the bonds are actually sold to individual investment companies. So it is multiple bonds, but for us to pay back is...
Forty-six million, okay. And so, and then you say the potential economic impact. So, does that mean that the citizens of West Jordan are going to get an increase in property tax in order? And how much, approximately, how much is it going to be saved?
Do you have that amount that they estimated?
A $250,000 home?
In the ballot language for the general obligation bond for the REC Center, it's estimated that a property valued at approximately $245,000, that their property taxes would go up approximately 54, 21, so about $55 a year.
Okay, we're talking about the general obligation?
Correct.
That's the REC bond?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I thought, all right. Well, I'm on a fixed income, $50 is $50. I don't think that Mr. Social Security is going to increase my social security. I know it's $55, but you know, I feel sorry for people that are on truly, truly fixed income, and they're living in a house that's all paid for, and anyway, just food for thought. Thank you. Don't forget the seniors, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? I will close the public hearing for item 7C. We'll move now to the business items. Business item 8A, discussion and possible action regarding Resolution 17-183 establishing all users of the city's public water system be billed for the month of August for culinary water use. Bill Piper.
Thanks, Mayor. On May 24th, 2017, Resolution 17-89 was adopted, which included amended fees associated with water rates, and these water rates were to take effect on July 1st, 2017. There are some ambiguity as to whether this new rate was effective for the billing cycle following July 1st, or 2017, or for the water actually used on or after July 1st, 2017. So for the billing cycle associated with the month of July, the city billed all users as if the new rate was effective for the entire billing cycle for the month of July, even if the water actually used was in the month of June. And this has been the practice of the city for all prior rate changes. And the purpose of this resolution tonight is for the interest of equity, the water rates for the month of August 2017 will be billed in the month of September of the water rates in effect prior to July 1st, 2017. If the council has any questions for me on this.
Questions from council. Councilmember Burton.
Thank you, Mayor. So as I understand it, there are people who got billed after July 1st, or on or after July 1st, for water they used in June, and this, what you're proposing now, will roll the rates back during the month of August for the billing that will happen in September.
That's correct.
Okay. So if the amount of water they used in June is different than the amount of water they used in August, then their bill will reflect differently, but we're hoping that it's close.
But June and August are hot months, and that's what our hope is.
Okay.
But once you bill them, it's very difficult to go back and apply a credit to each account.
And I agree, and I would say August was probably a hotter month this year than June was this year. So our residents will be coming out a little bit ahead, I would guess, by choosing this month. Would you agree?
That's probably the case.
Okay. I realize this may not be a perfect to-the-cent solution, but I thank you for finding a way to make it better than what it was before, and so, thank you, is all I have to say.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill, I just want to thank you for this work. While we may have been doing it that way for a very long time, I wasn't clear that we were measuring certain homes one week, other homes the next week, other homes the next week. I just kind of was thinking it was a monthly billing thing, so I thought everything was equitable. And so I think this corrects what my understanding was, and I think in the future, it might, I think we've got the solution in place in the future so that everybody's on the same billing cycle with the rates that they've got set. So I just want to thank you for that. That's all I have. Thanks, Mayor.
Councilmember Jacob.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe Bill can explain that to me a little bit better, because won't this be exactly the same? I mean, it's just making a different date, right? There will still be some that are billed for one week of old water rates, and three weeks of new water rates, and two weeks of old water rates, because it's done on a weekly cycle, right?
The cycle will still be the same, but as far as the uses it was during June, that was, some had interfered that being at the old rate. It's going to correct that situation.
Okay. And the fiscal impact statement on the staff report doesn't, it says there's a decrease in revenue, it doesn't say how much that is. Do we know how much that is?
That's not able to be calculated. It's just based on the different usage during that month and the difference in rates. You'd have to calculate it for each individual account.
So it's not able to be calculated?
It'd be very difficult to calculate.
Councilman Jacob, it's David Bricky. I would estimate that the difference is somewhere between $215,000 and $400,000.
Okay, thank you for that. What's the, what percentage, do you know, either one? What percentage of the total monthly revenue of a water enterprise fund, that is, of either month, make it June or August? Or if you could give me both, that would be incredible, but that might be difficult.
I can probably work on figuring that out, but it would be completely a guesstimate, and I'm not comfortable making that at this point, but I can work on that tomorrow.
Okay. Then I guess my last question before either Bill, or maybe Justin, or maybe Steve, and that is, when the rate change went into effect, it was a, as I recall, somewhat of an urgency. Water reserve fund was getting really, really low, it was going into the red, we had to pass something to keep the water fund in the black. How does this affect what you thought you were going to get out of the water rate change versus what you are going to get out of the water rate change, and does that affect your operations at all?
It will not affect the operations. It's only, I mean, it may affect the longer-term stuff, but it won't affect immediate operations.
Okay, thank you. I'm in opposition to this. I've mentioned to several of the council members my thoughts on this already, and to some of the staff. I strongly believe the right thing to do would be to go back and figure out what is owed, and issue a credit on what is owed, and not guess, and not switch rates back and forth and back and forth. I think this is messy. I think it's the wrong way to do it. So, my two cents. Thanks.
Mayor, I would move that we approve Resolution 17-183, and I would just say, I think it's a brilliant solution to a problem that could have really been a mess, and so I thank the staff for taking care of that.
Councilmember Burton.
Second.
Of a motion by Councilmember Newton and a second by Councilmember Burton, discussion to the motion? Let's vote.
Mayor Roth.
Yes.
Councilmember Newton.
Aye.
Councilmember Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols.
Yes.
Councilmember McConney.
Aye.
Councilmember Burton.
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob.
No.
The vote passes 6 to 1 in favor.
Business item 8C, discussion and possible action regarding a correction and revisit the increase to the sewer fees charged to the residents in October 2016. This, in October of last year, I believe there may have been unintended consequences. The sewer rate was raised, I believe, seven-plus percent, and added within the language was another increase as of July 1st, 2017, and it's my belief that since we have more than 100% of the operation of the entire sewer system for one year in cash reserves, at this point in time, there would be absolutely no need for that increase that happened July 1st. So I would like to roll that back to the same rate that was adopted in October of 2016. Councilmember Newton.
Mayor, do you have any numbers to go with that, on the amounts that we're talking about? Because I'm with you, I'm in the opinion that if we don't need it, that we shouldn't be charging it.
They have a slide presentation that they can do.
Great. I would like to see some of that.
David.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess it would be remiss if I didn't at least explain some of the logic that was implemented in Mr. Palish's initial request, and I've discussed this with the mayor, and I want to make sure that the rest of the council is aware, that in the very near future, the sewer district is going to have to implement changes required by the EPA to accommodate phosphorus disbursements by the year 2020. That's three years away, and that's what is reflected in Scenario A, Scenario B, and Scenario C. There's ways of paying for that. And the mayor made it very clear to me, it would not be a cash payment, but any amounts likely would be seen by Scenario B through a bond agreement. I just feel like I'd need to explain why Mr. Palish wanted that money. It was reserved for the obvious expenses that the city of West Jordan will be incurring in the next two years. There are scenarios that are being played out throughout the valley. You can see just recently in the Deseret News where Salt Lake City is going to have to completely revamp their sewer system over the next several years, and it will be an increase almost annually for the next seven years of 30% on their sewer rate every year for the next seven years. I think there was concern that as it relates to our obligation, do you want to try to start addressing that right now? The mayor made it very clear, there is money that's there that can continue to operate. But I, just in fairness to Mr. Palish, that was what his logic was.
I don't believe that we even knew about the new regulation at the time that this was put in place.
You know, that is correct. These new determinations, Steve, only came about within the last couple weeks. Is that correct? And they still have not been made as a final determination.
It is correct that the exact cost is still unknown. The sewer plant is working on estimates with a consultant, but at the time we approved the rate increase last year, yes, we did know about these costs. That's the reason why we increased the sewer rates. However, at the time, the sewer plant told us to expect somewhere between $4 and $6 million for these upgrades. The most recent numbers that we heard in the last week or so are up to $9 million to as much as $16 million. Those numbers are obviously changing, but they're not going down, it appears. So we did know about these costs, and that was one of the major reasons for implementing this rate increase back in November.
We still have more than 100% of the operation in excess fund balance in the sewer fund, is that correct?
That's not correct.
More than the annual cost to operate the system is in cash reserves, is that correct?
That's not correct.
Okay, get the slide up, please.
Here's a little bit of the history. I wish this was bigger, but this is our best estimate of the cash balance. You'll see it's closer to $8 million by our estimation, and the reason for that is simply that three lines need to be added together. If you look at these far-right column, these three numbers need to be added together. It just so happens that one of the numbers is negative, 3.4 million. That is the restricted cash that comes from impact fees. That balance has been negative for several years. It's not a surprise. It's on the reconciliation report that's provided regularly to the council, but sometimes folks forget to add together all of these numbers, including the deficit number. This is our best estimate of the sewer fund cash balance as of June 30th. So we believe it's closer to $8 million rather than $10 million.
I agree with that. I'd like you to explain why the impact fees are shown in a negative. I've never seen accounting similar to this, where we debit something that we don't have. How do you debit the impact fee? You should be collecting impact fees every time there's a building permit issued within the city.
Sure, we do. For example, if you look at the details here in the second column, this last year, we collected approximately $665,000. However, we expended $1.8 million. Obviously, our revenues were not enough to cover those expenses. That's why we recently revised our impact fees. We believe that our impact fees in the future will cover future costs. However, that does not fix the problem of having a negative cash balance to start with. And I can tell you a little bit of the history. The reason why it's negative is because back in 2013, the impact fees were intentionally lowered in an effort to be friendly to the business community. That's the short version of the story. And this is where... the short version of the story. And this is where it has brought us, to a negative balance.
I still don't understand that. But back to the cash balance, could we fast forward to the slide that shows the actual cost to operate the entire sewer system in our city?
Sure.
For one year?
You're probably referring to past years where it has cost about eight million dollars to operate the entire sewer fund. But that's the past.
You don't have that slide here?
Well, I have a different version that shows future years.
But those are estimates. I wanted to see what we've actually spent in the last few years. Do you have that?
Sure. Well, no, I don't. But you do in your packet.
Yeah, I know. I've seen them.
It shows past years, about eight million, seven million. Yes, that's correct. But the difference is, we have unusual costs that are coming up this year and in the next several years. As we heard, the sewer plant is estimating that West Jordan's portion of their upgrades will cost nine million to sixteen million dollars. And...
We don't know that figure yet, do we? We haven't got any bids in yet, do we?
No, we don't. We also have a large, a large capital projects list that's being built as we speak. This fiscal year, two thousand eighteen, we have twelve capital projects that are being built. Here's the list on the screen. Six point nine million dollars worth of projects. Over half of that, about half of that, is from Seventieth South, three point five million dollars. That's just one project. There are eleven other projects that need to be built. It just happens to be a very expensive year. And we're estimating that the total cost to operate the sewer fund, including these costs, will be about fourteen million dollars. Not eight million like it's been in the past. And once again, all of these costs were known, or at least estimated, last November, when we recommended a rate increase. And nothing has changed, except the estimates for costs have gone up. That's one thing that has changed. Now, you see in the three scenarios that are in your packet, there are simply three different ways to pay for the nine to sixteen million dollars to the sewer plant. Scenario A has a huge spike in two thousand nineteen. That's if we paid nine million dollars lump sum. That's probably not a wise way to go. It would push our cash reserves negative immediately. Scenario B still has a spike in two thousand eighteen for our own capital projects within the city. But the sewer plant upgrades would be paid by a ten-year bond, which of course spreads out the cost. But even in this case, our cash balance is reduced dramatically mainly because of capital projects. And Scenario C is the same, except it's a little bit worse-case scenario if we had to pay sixteen million dollars through a bond. Our cash balances are reduced dramatically in any of these scenarios. Once again, we expected these costs, and this is the main reason why we recommended rate increases back in November.
It never ceases to amaze me every time we talk about increases in fees specifically, that the very next year always has a dramatic spike in it. I've sat here for twelve years, and every time we talk about rate increases, the very next year always has a dramatic spike in it. We haven't done six million dollars worth of sewer projects in the twelve years I've been here in one year, ever. In fact, I believe this year is the most we've ever done in the twelve years I've been on the dais. But I don't want to be argumentative. The council needs to decide what they want to do. Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to that cash balances slide?
Sure.
So I'm kind of confused on this one. What's the actual cash we have, actual estimated cash we have on hand?
Well, it depends how you define cash. Bill, maybe you could help answer that question?
It would be around eight million dollars.
So... I'm really not understanding this impact fee stuff. Did we take out a loan for that? Is this money that's out on a bond or something somewhere?
No, it's just held as a cash account, and an adjustment is made to restricted cash.
So if you're asking, why do we carry forward a negative...
Yeah, yeah.
...zeroing that out?
If we didn't have impact fees to pay for something, we just used cash and said, well, we need to refund money to the impact fees. Is that what we're saying? Return money to the impact fee fund?
We keep it as a negative balance because as we get impact fee revenue, we can offset that. And in the CAFR, actually, restricted cash is offset with unrestricted cash. It's shown as one figure.
So, Bill, another way to say that is maybe after this new CAFR comes out in November, you'll see a number that says something like eight million dollars. Is that right?
That's correct.
So that's taking the cash we have on hand. And then on paper, we've said, well, we've already spent three and a half million that we didn't have, so we need to pay back three and a half million over there. As a city, since that's kind of a debt to ourself, if we just said, you know, let's just forgive the debt, would we not have eleven point four million cash? All right. Not making sense. I'll drop it.
Councilmember Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I actually thought you were making great sense, and I was hoping that we had better answers. Can we go back to the scenario slides? We need to stop on Scenario A, I guess. It doesn't really matter, because I'm talking about the past, which is the same on all three. In the past, at least on the last thirteen years that are shown on the slide, there aren't any similar large expense spikes. Have we not had, over the last thirteen years, we haven't had large projects like this, like we are having currently?
No, that's a good point. There have been spikes. They always go up and down. But the reason it's a smoother line in the past is because for this chart, we use audited numbers from the CAFR, which calculate the numbers a little bit differently. They don't actually look at actual up and down costs. They look at a depreciation of existing infrastructure, which is a more stable number. So in reality, yes, there are spikes that go up and down. But in order to show numbers that have been audited, we use the CAFR numbers.
Okay, so we're looking at the future differently than we're looking at the past on this?
Yes.
On the same chart?
Yes. And the reason is to plan for cash flow. If you have a huge spike, we need to answer the question, do we want cash reserves to go negative or not?
Well, it would be helpful, for me, anyway, it would be helpful to look at the past as it happened, as we're projecting the future to happen. Because if we're going to figure in depreciation and things into, I mean, in five years, next year will be the past. Right? So in five years, we're going to look back and not see the big spike, because we're going to look at the depreciation and the audited numbers and the different things. So we're not comparing apples to apples, which makes it really difficult for me to justify anything one way or the other. Because I've got apples on one hand and Volkswagen's on the other hand, and it's just not the same thing. That said, looking at the past, not considering the future on this, we do see a dramatic drop in expenses in two thousand twelve, which led to relatively unprecedented unrestricted balances in the past. We were all of a sudden collecting more revenue than we were spending, and, which makes sense. Your banking account goes up when that happens. At least that happens at my house. Well, it would, anyway, if it did, but it doesn't. In that case, I think it's a policy decision that the council needs to decide, is what is an appropriate balance in that fund, and how do we get there from here? I think the mayor's right, and I don't say that as often as I probably should, but I'm saying it here. I think the mayor's right on this, that the cash balance is too high to maintain. Obviously, none of these scenarios show it being maintained. But I believe it's unreasonable for us to maintain a hundred percent of an annual expense rate in any given fund. The state doesn't allow us to do that in the general fund. I don't know why we would allow it on ourselves, on any one of our enterprise funds. So a figure, a percentage, whether that's twenty-five percent, or twenty percent, or fifty percent, or seventy percent, or whatever that number needs to be, is a decision we need to make as a council, to decide what should our cash reserves in our enterprise funds look like as a rule going forward, and then we can budget accordingly. But I think comparing apples to apples is the first step in being able to do that. That said, I'm not sure where I'm going to come down on this tonight necessarily, but I think it's important to have that policy discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. So Bill and Steve, maybe, I want to say, help me a little bit, even though I do accounting at my place of employment, but just help me follow along. So the sewer fund is a restricted fund that we just use the funds specifically for sewer in the city. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay, so in the school that I work at, we have restricted funds, and I overspend in those funds on purpose, because I have to file reports that say I spent the money where the legislature told me to spend the money. And when I overspend, I transfer money from my unrestricted fund to cover the excess expense in my restricted fund. Do we do, are we required to do something like that?
At the end of the year, the deficit in the restricted account is offset against the unrestricted account.
Right.
But during the year and going forward, as far as the general ledger account goes, we keep it negative, because a lot of times with sewer, you're going to have to put in the infrastructure before the growth. And so you're going to do your capital improvements before you're going to get the reserves in there.
Right. And I'm trying to...
And so it's going to go in negative.
Yeah, and I'm trying to, we don't really do that at a school. We don't, you know, we either lease a building, or we buy a building and bond for it, and those kind of things. So we cover, we have a negative balance. In fact, can you go back to that sewer fund with the negative balance, the three numbers? The previous slide, whatever.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, Steve. That one there. So that's just a paper negative number of a restricted account that's offset by a general fund in the bank. But this is what we're deficit in the sewer fund, right?
Yeah, the sewer fund has three general ledger accounts. The top one being cash unrestricted, cash capital replacement fund, which is accounted for separately, and then the impact fees, which are negative. Those are all metted into one figure on the CAFR. It is cash unrestricted.
So this stuff doesn't bother me from the standpoint, I mean, it bothers me that we're negative, which says we have to do something. But I understand what this is saying as far as a paper loss in a restricted account that we're backfilling from an unrestricted account, because we still have to operate. But at least we know that we're three and a half million dollars total negative on impact fees. Is that...
That's correct.
Okay.
It's just on the books, the general ledger.
Right, right, which is no different than how we do it at the school. And, you know, we're doing reports now to fill in numbers for two thousand eighteen. And our budget is an educated best guess based on, we know what our contracts are, we know what services that we need, you know, maintenance of property, custodial services, those kind of things. And we get rate increases, and we project them, and then we revise the budget because things change, and fences fall over, and AC breaks, and things like that. So I appreciate clarifying this for me as it relates to the money.
And the reason we don't make an entry on the books is because we want to isolate the deficit in impact fees, so that future impact fees can either be raised, or as growth comes in, the impact fees can go to offset that number.
Right, right. To me, what this says to me is, we have a three and a half million dollar deficit in impact fees in the sewer fund that's offset by the amount of revenue that we have. And that's a paper negative. It's a paper offset.
It's really not.
Thank you.
It's really not. It should be frightening, and it should be glaringly obvious what's going on here. The existing residents are covering the expense that impact fees should be covering, if they were at the proper rate, by a tune of three point four five million dollars per year. So it should be glaringly obvious to everyone. You remember, we had this discussion just a few months ago about impact fees, where we lowered them on multifamily houses, I believe, maybe three months ago? What you're doing is, the existing residents are subsidizing the development, the impacts to the system going forward when you debit it like this.
Right, right. But what I understood was, in two thousand twelve or two thousand thirteen, there was a decrease in the impact fees, and this is the result of that.
Bingo, yes, but...
Okay, I'm not, I think we're seeing it on the same thing.
But impact fees are different than, impact fees should be covered and borne by the impacts, the new impacts to the system, not on the existing residents. So I understand what you're trying to say about this.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm just trying to provide some clarity. Not everybody is accountable.
Yeah, I just don't want to compare it to what you're doing, your budgeting at school. This is something that should be obvious to the council, and it's something that we need to deal with.
Right. And what I said at the school is, when we overspend, we backfill it with unrestricted funds, because we have to spend the restricted amounts. And that's different from this. I'm just trying to draw some comparisons.
You're just doing it on paper here.
Yes.
The residents are paying for it.
Correct.
The existing residents are paying for the new.
Correct. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Steve.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. Since my understanding is, we would require a change to the fee schedule to make any adjustments, I move that we direct staff to come prepared to our next city council meeting with a fee schedule that returns the sewer rate to what it was June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen.
Second. We have a motion by Councilmember McConaughey, a second by Mayor Roff. Discussion to the motion? Let's vote. We even need a vote? We just need to direct staff, right? Let's vote. Let's roll call vote.
Councilmember Jacob?
No.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Aye.
Councilmember Burton?
Yes.
Councilmember Anderson?
No.
Councilmember Newton?
I'm not sure I understand. I'll vote no for right now, and then maybe we can clarify there.
Councilmember Nichols?
No.
Mayor Roff?
Yes.
The vote fails three to four.
Councilmember McConaughey?
Thank you, Mayor. So the intent in doing that was that we could, we can't make any change to the rate tonight. We have to change the fee schedule. So if we have the fee schedule brought back at our next meeting, we can actually make a change at that point in time. And then the rate that I wanted to put in was the rate that was effective as of June thirtieth, because it was a second increase that went into effect on July first that you wanted to walk back. So that's why I had made that motion in that way. So effectively, it goes back to what the rates were six months ago. But it lets us actually make the change at that point in time. Conversation tonight, while it may help, in theory, add clarity to the financial situation, we really can't take any action without having a fee schedule to pass. So that was the intent of the motion, that has died. Thank you.
So to understand your motion, it would put it at the fees that were raised last October, the increase that was there, the seven plus percent that was raised last October, but it wouldn't increase by that amount again as of, it would go back to that rate?
Automatic, I couldn't remember the October date, the automatic increase that happened July first?
December first, and then July first. A little bit of two days.
Yeah, the automatic increase... Yeah, the, the automatic increase that happened July 1st, without any further conversation, that was just worked into the fee schedule for the new budget, that would be removed.
Mayor, um, if this is a motion or something that the council member wants us to consider, he certainly can work with me and the staff, and we will have it presented and ready for consideration in the next city council meeting, whenever it might occur. I don't know if it's going to be September 20th, or 29th, 27th, so... But I, I don't know that you need to have at this point a vote to tell us to get something ready. If you want to, if there are two council members that want to tell us to put something on the agenda, then it will get prepared, and we'll have it prepared for a public hearing, and then you can all vote. I, I think what I'm trying to suggest is that you're exercising yourself in a way that you don't need to at this point.
Thank you. And, and the reason for doing that as a motion, as opposed to just direction to staff, was that, that way we'd have something formal recorded in minutes. It's easier to go back and research and find it if we're just going through, looking for the motions, rather than the additional commentary. So for myself, um, I, I know there have been some miscommunications and some frustrations with finance, so having a, a motion supported by the majority of the council was, was what I had hoped for, rather than, than just straight direction. So, yes, it is more than what was needed, but, but there was logic behind, that, that was the logic behind it.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Melanie, um, on a, on a fee decrease, that still needs a public hearing?
Anytime we amend the uniform fee schedule, we require a public hearing.
All right, thank you.
With a seven-day notice.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Newton.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Uh, since I wasn't here when all this took place, um, I would like to get my head around the whole thing, and where we're at, and what's coming. Um, as soon as we could get that information, uh, possible of what is expected, so we can make some proper decisions. And, and, and also, uh, understanding this, this impact fees, I don't see how, if we, if we overspent, if we spent uh, basically unrestricted funds to cover the, what should have been done by impact fees, um, we can't raise impact fees on, on people in the future to, to go back and pay for stuff that's, should have been done in the past. Um, I don't see that as a legitimate uh, uh, situation, and we could be possibly, possibly sued on that basis. So, I, I, I just don't, I don't have enough information here to, to be able to, to, to understand the whole thing, and so I would like to be able to spend some more time and get as much information I can, understand where we're heading, and what the, uh, what the possible uh, outcome of these EPA requirements are, as soon as we could get that information.
Do you have enough to bring back what we need to future council meeting? It can't be on the 27th, though.
I believe I do, Mayor. I'll work with you, and by sending email out to each of you to clarify, but at the present time, the rate will remain as is, until we have that, uh, next, we'll have to have a public hearing, we'll have to have that all noticed up properly, but we can do that if you let me know when you would like to. If you want to shoot for the 1st of October, I think we can answer some of Councilman Burton's concerns prior to that, prior to that date. Uh, or I said Newton. I should have, excuse me, I should have said Newton, I said Burton. But, um, but I can certainly, whatever I share, certainly with Councilman Newton, I will share with everyone else.
And uh, could you please uh, have staff prepare when the uh, large bond that was taken out to build the sewer treatment plant will be paid off in its entirety, uh, when that will be retired?
You can figure that out, Steve.
I give that to all the members of the council, because I know that's coming here within the next decade, I believe, so uh, that needs to be accounted for, too, those uh, bond payments to this sewer treatment plant.
I'll have that included.
Thank you. Need a motion to move to closed session for discussion of character, professional competence, or physical or mental health of an individual, strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation, strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, including any form of water right or water shares, and adjourn from there.
I move to uh-
Call that.
Yes, moving to the closed session for the reasons listed, and we'll adjourn from that location at that time.
We have a motion by Councilmember Burton, second by Councilmember Anderson. Discussion to the motion. Let's vote.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Jacob?
Yes.
Mayor Rolf?
Yes.
Councilmember Nichols?